Well, good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you participating in the county government. This time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for November 12th to order. And Brian, if anyone wants to speak today? You got a cellphone that's still on like mine is? Thanks. Time to turn it off. We are very privileged to have Mr. Wayne Roberts with us from Oasis Family Life Church to bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge of the flag. Stand if you're able.
Good morning to all. Bringing greetings from our pastor, Pastor Anthony Murray. Father God, we thank you for this day, a day in which we have not seen. The God, we ask you to honor our steps. Bless the leaders, dear God. Give them wisdom, understanding, knowledge, and unity. For the task at hand, as they move into this meeting, dear God, we ask you, dear Jesus, to do the instinct that they need to do. Bring them to the power and honor, dear Jesus. And oh, God, we ask you right now, when the meetings are done, give them their hearts and minds, dear God, to let them know that a job has been well done. In the holy and mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and for all.
Thanks so much, Wayne. The minutes of the October 22nd, 2019 work session and the October 22nd board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Pauling and our announcements segment, we have the Veterans Day celebration from yesterday that we're going to share and watch. We appreciate everyone coming out today to Veterans Park for a beautiful monument and a great day to honor our veterans.
You know, it takes courage to defend the honored duty in country. In honoring our heroes, we remember their achievements, their courage, dedication, and we just say, "Thank you for your sacrifice." We stand in the midst of patriots and family members and friends of those who have nobly served this great country. They shared several fundamental qualities. They possessed courage, pride, determination, dedication to duty, and integrity.
Great job, Jeff Harkins and your team in public information. We appreciate that. Looking at several veterans out in the room, Yolanda Newell and Bridge and Chad. Would y'all stand? Anybody else, veterans? Who'd I miss? Sheriff Gullidge? All right. Do want to recognize elected officials, which I didn't do before. Sheriff Gary Gullidge does so much for our county. Glad to have you here always. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Captain Robert Davis in the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Gullidge will come forward and speak about.
Get the pretty part up here, too. Let everybody know this is Captain Robert Davis. Sheriff's Office wants to recognize him for the Board of Commissioners Public Safety Award. He's been with the Sheriff's Office since October of 1988, back when we used to ride dinosaurs instead of driving cars. Currently, he's assigned as Assistant Commander of our Criminal Investigation Division. Major Tom Murphy nominated Robert for wanting to recognize him for his efforts in reviewing and developing better policies along with reporting procedures and case files. Captain Davis has supervised many major cases and has been instrumental in helping our administration advance our office for several years. He is currently spearheading a few projects to help the Sheriff's Office work with the community to help us in fighting crime. We at the Paulding County Sheriff's Office do our best to continuously provide the best law enforcement protection to our citizens, and Captain Robert Davis represents the dedication we desire to bring to our community and the performance of his duties. We're pleased to acknowledge his efforts and the excellent job he performs daily by proceeding him with this award. Me and Robert goes back to the beginning, he was here when I got here, so we've done a lot of different things with the Drug Task Force, and we've had a lot of fun. We've had a lot of sleepless nights, and Robert, I appreciate the job you do, and you're always, you've always been a stand-up. You've always done it the right way, and I appreciate, it's always been a pleasure to work with you. Also, Texas Roadhouse is going to give you a dinner for two at their place, and me and you'll go anytime you want to go. And I'll pay for hers. Y'all join me in congratulating Captain Davis.
And I would like to add to the sheriff's remarks with appreciation award here, Captain Davis. Public Safety Appreciation Award is presented to Robert Davis in recognition of outstanding service to his community, presented by the Board of Commissioners this 12th day of November 2019. Proud of you. Frank Baker, our county administrator, is going to present a check to Make-A-Wish Foundation now, and he's just come around. This is on behalf of the Paulding Ride for Wishes. Baker Street?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could get Tim Merly and Jaylee Welsh to come up from Make-A-Wish Georgia? Come on up here. Well, as most of you probably know, back in September, we had a bicycle ride on the Silver Comet to benefit Make-A-Wish Georgia. What's really great about this is, you know, you hear us talk about Team Paulding all the time. This is truly a Team Paulding event. And what I mean by that is, it's, it's all done with our employees. It's our employees' opportunity to give back to the community in which they serve. So we hooked up last year for our first event, and it was very successful, and we appreciate the involvement with these folks right here. So we came back this year for our second annual, and we, we did a little bit better than we did the first time. So today, we want to present a check for $16,000 to Georgia Make-A-Wish. I'm going to, I'm going to let Tim say a few words, and then I'm going to call some folks up that I want to kind of recognize this morning.
Thanks, Frank. And thank you, Paulding County, just for really being an amazing community. It was a real pleasure to come out and spend the morning with all of you. I brought my sons out as well, and I see a few familiar faces that were out there this morning as well. We sat, had some members of the Board of Commissioners out there, which I think just says a lot about your community. And I just want all of you to know that this money that you guys raised will go a long way in granting wishes for our children right here in Paulding County. Thank you so much.
I know the presenting sponsor is here, Womack Truck. If Ms. Womack can come up to be with us, we want to get some pictures. And if any of the other sponsors are here, please come on up. Chamber would love to have you come up. But anybody else who was a sponsor, if you could come up? Ellis, that's great. And while they're coming up, I want to tell you just how much of a Team Paulding event this is. All of our folks volunteer their time to be a part of, a part of this. But I want to send a special thank you out to Chief Pelfrey. Is Chief Pelfrey here? I see him in the back. Could you come up with us? And the reason why I'm asking him to come up is that he showed up at the office a few weeks before the ride, and he said, "We have a check from the employees of the fire department." And it was $750, the employees themselves. And so, we really appreciate that. So, thank you to the sponsors, and thanks to all the employees who helped out with this. So, we're looking to go bigger next year, and maybe, we talked about a date change next year, maybe a little bit into October, but we'll, we'll work on that. So, if, if it's permissible, Mr. Chairman, if we could have some pictures with the board, we'd appreciate it.
Sprite that camera again.
I want to ask one question. What, what favor? Everybody else stays down. All right, there we go.
Dave, before we move on, let's make sure that we recognize the leadership and direction and guidance on Frank, from Frank Baker on that project. That's been his, his, his idea, I believe, from the start, and, and I'm real proud of the county and the employees, and Frank's done a great job with that.
Sure has. I wonder if he was listening there or not?
Does he listen to us? Frank, were you listening when we were saying nice things about you? I don't have to do it again, do I? Okay.
Frank?
Yes?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the board willing to allow the employees to do this event, and the, the two-year total is $29,000.
Awesome.
So we did, did $13,000 last year and the additional $16,000. So, we'd like to continue to do it, but we appreciate the Chairman and the Board of Commissioners allowing us to do it.
Thank you. We have no invited guests today under bid awards. Number one is discuss action to award the purchase of data terminals, vehicle mounts and software to ProLogic, excuse me, I T S in the amount of $673,078.2. Ms. Pollard?
Do you mind reading number two as well, as they go together?
Not at all. Number two is discuss action to award the purchase of dispatch consoles and 911 laptops to C D W G in the amount of $30,038.84.
We issued one bid a few weeks ago, and this came back to purchase the equipment for the New World Public Safety records management system and, as well as CAD that will be used by our 911 center. And this is the equipment for, to house that software. It will be equipment from the vehicles all the way into the buildings. And we did not receive two bids that completely satisfied the needs of every department. So we were able to go back to both bidders, C D W and Prologics, and work between the two to get the best equipment for Paulding County. So that's why this bid's been split. So it's a little higher than the lowest bid, because the lowest bid did not contain what we needed, and it is a little lower than the highest bid. So, and Will and David Mumford, I believe, are here for questions.
Good morning. I'd like to add a couple comments to Ms. Pollard's opening statements. The reason the quote is different is because the second bid did not bid ruggedized equipment. The ruggedized equipment is necessary for the vehicles, they, because of the extreme heat and cold that they go through, the regular office laptops would not sustain the life expectancy of that equipment. So therefore, that is the increase we see on that one. We also went with the C D W G laptops, because the Lenovo brand was a little bit stronger than the other brand that was recommended from the other bid. So between the combinations, working with the two vendors that we've done work with in the past, we feel very comfortable that we have a good equipment coming in at the best price possible. Might add that there are some ruggedized laptops in the vehicles that are still relevant to today's technology. We'll be taking those equipment out of the vehicles, and we'll be recommissioning those to departments such as the permit office, DOT, most of the offices that do field work, so that we can do some real, on, online services with a real-time access for those departments and the public. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Will. And as you're going back, I see that you're sitting by your better half, who's one of our school board members, Teresa Lyons. Teresa, glad to have you here. All right. Number three is action to award the contract to procure, construct, and install the HPE Semblity Hyper Converge solution to the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $321,532.95. Ms. Pollard?
Again, we received bids for this equipment, and this solution is intended to simplify the infrastructure management, accelerate internal projects, lower IT spending, and reduce operational complexity. The age of the current hardware infrastructure, along with unsupported environments, presents significant security and outraged, outraged risk to continue, and this was a budgeted expense, and it's within the budgeted amount. So Will can give you the specifics. Those words are bigger than I am.
This is one of my, probably one of my least favorite things to do, is ask for money for equipment that still runs, but is end of life. You know, at home, I think we all do it. We kick the tires on it, we bang on it, we make it go a little bit longer, but in business, we just can't do that. It ruins our reputation, it ruins our services. So at this point, all electronics have a life expectancy, and they're going to fail. And we want to be ahead of that curve. We want to make sure they don't fail in our business. So what this equipment does, it replaces our, our virtual blade center that is going into life, as well as our disk-based storage area network that is going into, end of life. So it fills that void. This specific hardware is from HP. It should fill our, our needs for the next five to seven years, and we'll be up here again asking for another one. So again, it's my least favorite popular thing to do, but it's a necessity in the business world we live in. Any questions?
Thank you for the backup material on these systems that all the commissioners were able to read in the gist. Reports from committees and departments. First, we have Sheriff Gary Gullidge to give us Sheriff's Office updates.
Good morning again. I know y'all got a lot on the agenda. I'll make mine short and sweet, and Brian will leave me alone. The sheriff's report for the months of January through October 2019, during this timeframe, Sheriff's Office patrol 2,452,558 miles. A total arrested was 2,940, issued 2,035 traffic citations. We handled 51,929 complaints. High-volume calls were 4,538 alarms, 2,403 domestics, 1,411 lockouts. We served 6,095 subpoenas and civil papers, handled 4,760 suspicious incidents, 2,100 theft by takens, burglaries, and internet autos. Go ahead and put a punch in here on the internet autos. We're still having a problem just about every day with people leaving valuables in their cars, and they're going through subdivisions and popping door locks and getting guns and computers and billfold and pocketbooks and cash. So if you have any valuables in your car, the public service announcement is, "Please take them inside with you, and we won't have to do reports, and you won't lose your stuff." And these people are, they're hard to catch. It's a problem statewide, so if everybody would help us by taking our valuables inside, it would, it would be nice. Our guys done 6,994 traffic stops, 37 DUIs. We cleared 2,709 warrants. We conducted 724 zone patrols. And in juvenile division, we had 1,467 reports, were 404 assigned and 457 charged. The detention centers always stay in, booked up and busy. They booked in 3,132 inmates and had a daily average population of 235. And I gave y'all a book with all the other numbers with these included in it. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer if you got any. If not, I'll move on. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Sheriff Gullidge. And we're getting down to the end where we won't be able to see Amy Tiszczak from CPS Computer Program Services, but Amy's going to come up and give us an update on the jail.
All right. Good morning, and I guess it's happy winter today. We kind of bypassed, bypassed fall, I think. Thankfully, the building has dried in, and it's nice and warm, so that is a, a plus for all the workers that are in there and getting this, this facility finished up. We are progressing really quickly. Turner's doing a great job at really trying to press the schedule to get things finished up. We're kind of in the home run stretch now. Things in the building, you'll see, are kind of the finishes going on, painting is going on, and I'll get into a little bit more on the progress update in a little bit. As far as the, the project update to date, there are no changes since our last update. The change orders, one through four, were approved previously for construction. That amount right now is $62,226,516. Again, there's been no changes to the budget since the last update in September. Current construction contingency, we're looking at $258,379. Those items are, the remaining balance on that will be kind of to finish up the, the project, and if there's some scope gaps that need to be covered, that's what some of that funding will be used for. Upcoming and under review items, I know we spoke the last update that we had a couple change orders that we were in receipt of and that we were still reviewing. We have received change orders five, six, and seven. The totals on those, change order five is $601,993, change order six, $97,722. And then I'll go into change order seven here in a minute. Just to kind of get everybody up to speed on the change orders, when we do receive those, there's a significant amount of information to go through. Between these three change orders, we have approximately 750 pages of backup. So we, you know, we take this very, it's very important to us to go through these numbers and make sure that everything is, is, is right before we present them to you for final decision. We understand that we have to be accountable to you all. You have to be accountable to the citizens. So when you see the, the total numbers and the dollar figures associated with these change orders, it's something that we don't take very lightly. We need to vet through every single number, every single piece of data, and, you know, with 750 pages of backup, that does take a significant amount of time. Just to kind of dovetail into that, the totals that you're seeing on these change orders are not necessarily the amounts that we will ultimately approve. Every change order comes in, and we always have questions. So it's a kind of a back and forth process that we vet through these numbers, and quite honestly, a lot of times, we don't agree. So it's just, just the process that we go through in construction. So we make sure that by the time that we finally bring a final number to you, it is correct, and we feel that it is valid. Change order seven, there's kind of the big items. There's several reconciliation numbers in there, which mean credits for work that has not been assigned, and that we do see a, a credit back on those. There's some items in change order seven that were, as the process goes through in construction, there's things that the Sheriff's Office really need to get this building functional day one for them. Some of the, you know, kind of a typical add at this point are gun ports in the housing control rooms. These are, are required by the Sheriff's Office for proper operation. So these things we needed to get in, we know we needed to get in. So what we try to do with these change orders is really try to catch as many before they become a schedule and a, an impact to the construction. So a lot of these that are included in change order seven, which once we finalize the vetting and we bring that to you, we will make that very clear as far as, you know, we'll, we'll point out which items were caught before they were an impact to the schedule. What we'll be presenting later in the agenda is a recommendation to increase Turner's GMP contract to $63,200,000. And what we're basically saying at this point, we were not saying that we're going to approve that amount. What we're saying that we'd like that to be a mechanism for the Chairman to be able to sign change orders in the next few months without having to come back to you all. Given where we are in the schedule, I think there's one, one more meeting left for the, throughout the, the end of the year. So as far as timing-wise and to release Turner on getting the direct work done, that's what we're, we're recommending with this agenda item coming up. Projected budget through completion, what you'll see change from the last update is we've put a, that $63,200,000 number in for construction manager at risk. The overall budget would then, what we're looking for, if that's a all-in number, is just over the 72 million. We understand that 72 is the number that we have to meet, and we're working very diligently to, to get to that number. We understand that, you know, that was what was approved early on, and that's what we're Progress, if anybody has been around kind of the backside of the administrative building, you'll see the visitation building. The structure is up. Metal studs have been installed. HVAC duct is going in. They plan on We understand that 72 is the number that we have to meet and we're working very diligently to, to get to that number. We understand that, you know, that was what was approved early on and that's what we're targeting. Progress, if anybody has been around kind of the backside of the administrative building, you'll see the visitation building. The structure is up. Metal studs have been installed. HVAC duct is going in. They plan on getting the exterior dried up, dried in in the next couple of weeks. Support building, final painting, low voltage cabling's going in. All of the security systems are being installed. Ceiling of the concrete floors are happening. Millwork and kitchen equipments being installed. So it's really kind of coming to life at this point. You'll see a lot of the equipment coming in instead of just basically looking at an empty shell. Housing, lights and ceilings are being installed, millwork's being installed, and the site has been coming along as well. Curbs have been installed. The roof drains are being tied in and you'll see paving in the next several weeks going on. Alright, just a couple of photos of, of the interior. The photo on the left is the property storage room. It's an extremely large room and once we finish this out, we will have some metal shelving in, in here to fill up the room. And this is for just obviously the, the property storage for the inmates. To the right is the pre-booking area. The millworks, the millwork that you're seeing there, the officers will come in and they'll do their write-ups at, at those stations. Photo on the left are, is the kitchen. So you see a lot of the kitchen equipment being installed. The hood is installed. The dayroom's on the right. That's a typical dayroom. So you have cells on both the, the ground floor and the mezzanine level. And millwork being installed and just kind of a typical office space of the law enforcement center on the right. As far as schedule updates, final completion, we're looking, it did move out a few weeks. We're looking at March 3, 2020. Support building, we're looking at 1223. The kennel, 1114. LEC, 1217. And visitation, 116. And housing, 1217. Alright, and that's it. Any questions?
Very good, Amy. I appreciate the update and then the reading material. Also, great to have Eric Johnson here with us there. Thank you for being here, Eric. I was interested in the, the, how much of this you bid out or just companies that you've worked with before? Obviously with the county, we bid just about everything out, particularly if it's over 50 grand, but we got FFE, FFNE coming up. Y'all bid most of that out or you just go with people you know?
No, we, we have to bid it out. Pretty much all the FFNE is gonna be over your threshold of 50,000. So anything from lockers to, the furniture is the big portion of FFNE. So we've awarded the furniture to two companies at the last, actually at the last work session, we presented those. So we actually are dividing up the furniture between two vendors. One is Advantage who is a local rep out here that does a lot of work with you all. And the other company is Office Creations. They're out in Norcross. And we did that to get pretty much the biggest bang for your buck, you could say. Some weren't competitive in some pieces of furniture and the other company was. So to get the lowest price overall and make sure that the quality's still there, we actually split those orders up. Everything else, so we have communication cabling being installed and we did, we issued a formal RFP for that. AV systems, we did the same thing. That's been awarded. And so things coming up down the line. We have a couple smaller items coming up. Shelving, I'll be coming to you with a, a recommendation on ordering some shelving. Colonel Hunton's been really helpful. We kind of try to work through the budget and see where we can cut, you know, cut some costs. So we felt that a lot of the metal shelving, we could get inmate labor to handle. So I'll be putting together an order list to come to you with for the materials. And then a lot of the smaller items will be coming to you with, but the bulk of the FFNE items have already been presented and they've been issued POs for.
Other questions? It's also good to have Tim Collins with Turner Construction here. They've worked hard on this job. Thank you for being here, Tim, and your cohort there. I forgot his name, but good to have y'all. Let's see. That's it for the reports. We don't have anyone that's signed up for public participation on agenda items. Under the consent agenda, we have five items. Number one is to appoint Lisa Lewis as the representative for Paulding County to the Northwest Georgia Region One Emergency Medical Services Council with a term from January 1, 2020 to January 1, 2022. Number two is discuss action to approve the transfer of $10,324.30. That's wrong. Let me start over on that one. Discuss action to approve the transfer of $10,324.3 square feet which equates to .237 acres of right-of-way to the Georgia Department of Transportation for project number 006857 for the purchase price of $173,955, of course located in post four. It's in agenda item number three is to adopt a new job classification for a systems analyst. Number four is to approve the animal control fee schedule. And number five is to amend the August 13, 2019 board meeting minutes to reflect the approval of the purchase contract for tax parcels R085183 and R082010. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of these five consent agendas items on regular business? Under old business, number one is to appeal, appeal from the Development Waiver Review Committee's decision on application 2019-03-W, a request by Qualusi Vineyards and Robert C. Gilbert on approximately 40 acres for waiver of the minimum fire flow requirements that comes out of Development Regulation 4.1.3.6 for agricultural operation. Property is located in land lots 3940, 105, and 106 in District 3, Section 3 on a private road being the north side of Blossom Trail, west of Farm Street at 70 Blossom Trail. Portion FKA as lot 39, Flower Farm subdivision. It's also in post four. The waiver review committee's decision was to deny the application with a vote of 3-0. And this was forwarded from the August 13, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And Ms. Lippman and Mr. Phillips will report.
Commissioners, this was, it says forwarded, it's actually tabled by y'all a couple, two, three months ago for consideration as to Mr. Gilbert's potential solution on his, on his fire flow situation. My understanding is that perhaps that fire flow situation is still ongoing in search of a solution. But it is on your agenda today because it was tabled for consideration at a later date and that date has arrived. Your options, of course, are to approve, deny, and you could consider tabling it for further consideration and further analysis.
I'm gonna ask to table it. He's got down to the final details. Still got a little bit of work to do, I think, by next meeting, if we could table it to the December, the meeting in December.
Okay, Rebecca will take care of that for the afternoon meeting. Any other comments on it? Discussion? Okay, we'll move right on into new business. Number one is discuss to adopt Resolution 19-33 authorizing the filing of application for the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 of the federal transit laws under Chapter 23 of Title 49 of the United States Code. Ms. Pollard?
This one is a lot simpler than the bid awards that we issue today. And it's income of money instead of outflow of funding, so. But I would like to go back and mention for my bid awards, those first two were SPOS, Public Safety, and number three was a general fund. I think I mentioned that one. It was, it was in the budget. But this, number one, new business is an authorization. It's to file a grant application. It's to fund, partially fund our senior 5311 transit buses. And so I say senior, but they're not all senior. They're, they provide transportation for work-related activities, shopping, medical, as well as to some of our seniors throughout the county. This grant is $58,911, I'm sorry, $58,951 is the federal portion and that's 50% match. But the cost of providing that service exceeds that amount. So it's just some income to help pay for the service.
Questions? Thanks, Ms. Pollard. Number two is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Four Star Real Estate Group LLC for the Magnolia Court subdivision. This is in post four. Mr. Jones?
Morning. A little background on this. Dallas-Aquithrough Highway is one of the busiest county roads in Paulding. I think it's third busiest right now with traffic volumes around 14,000 in the area between Mount Tabor Church Road and Highway 92. We've anticipated a future widening project on this section of Dallas-Aquithrough. It's in our current SPOS program and it's also in the Atlanta Regional Commission Transportation Improvement Program. This development, the Magnolia Court, was rezoned from R2 to R55 at the September 20, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. As part of the stipulations for rezoning, we requested and the owner developer at that time, Foley Residential, agreed to enter into a development agreement with the Paulding County Department of Transportation to participate in the mitigation of traffic concerns. The participation was agreed to at $250 per lot. Four Star, the current owner developer, has agreed to honor that development agreement. So at this time, we respectfully asked the board to authorize the chairman to enter into development agreement with Four Star and accept the funds for engineering for a future project on Dallas-Aquithrough Highway.
George, everything with this agreement is identical to what it was to the original owner that had done the rezoning?
Yes, Commissioner, exactly. Everything the same.
How do you come up with that dollar amount for, per lot?
It was a number that, you know, we negotiated. I think it's more of a showing of, you know, a need to, you know, kind of come together and address the future traffic concerns. We all know that Dallas-Aquithrough is a busy roadway. And this number per lot, I think it shows that they're willing to make a contribution to come up with an acceptable solution that in the future will be able to move traffic through there in a better manner than what we will if we just do nothing. So kind of looking forward to the future.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Number three is discuss action to authorize an increase in the guaranteed maximum price contract with Turner Construction Company not to exceed $63,000, $63,200,000. Further, authorize the chairman to approve change order request up to the funding limit as they are reconciled with final cost. Everybody knows this is in Commissioner Kaker's post two and Mr. Green and Amy's backup.
Okay. So again, to, to give kind of a summary where this recommendation's coming from. We have received those three change orders, change orders five, six, and seven. This is work that we've determined is required for the sheriff's office to open day one and be fully functional. Again, a lot of these changes, as a construction project goes on, it's hard to really determine exactly everything that is needed at the design state, you know, stage. Once we get going, building the building, there's things that do evolve that operationally the user does need. And what a lot of these are, are those items. There are some items in these change orders that we are still reviewing. We don't necessarily agree with the costs associated. But in order to release Turner on the direct work for the things that the sheriff's office needs, we'd like to use this as a mechanism since there is only one more meeting left, you know, next month before the end of the year. We'd like to have the ability to bring these finalized change orders and the numbers that we do agree with and that we've fully vetted to the chairman for approval up to that $63,200,000 number.
Let me jump in there. That's alright. Thank you. Just to add to that a little bit. Early on in the project, the construction experienced some delays in getting started. And then back in the summer and fall when we first started out, we had some record rains. And then right after that, we encountered rock on the project. And the project, the contractors required to manage these. But what they do is they, they file a notification to the county to let us know that these are potential delays in the overall progress of the work. And then that reserves their rights to, to ask for time compensation. And then as we go through the project, we continue to watch and see how they manage and try to recover the schedule. That's their job as construction managers, to try to recover from whatever conditions are experienced. And while we, we acknowledged that early on, you know, we wanted to see how the project was managed all the way to the end before we would actually agree on a final number for, for delays, which is overhead and, and staff that they have to keep on the job, job a longer period of time. So a significant amount of this requested funding is to cover for, for rain and other difficulties that they encounter that's contractually, they're eligible to receive. And we're, we're down to count in a few, a few days here and there to, to finalize these. And we want to be able to process that once we've got the backup that we feel comfortable with as a team, being the sheriff, CPS, Wakefield Beasley, the county, and, and the contractor, of course. So I want to point out that there is a significant amount of cost involved with lengthening the job. And we still continue to add work to the, to the project, which adds to the length of the job as well. But the majority of these items in this change order are, are things we've added that the sheriff needs to have a functional, efficient facility. We don't want to move in on, on day one and then say we should have done this or that and then have to add it later at a greater cost. So yes, we're asking you to work with us on this so we can continue to, to give directives to the contractor to move forward without having to have a delay and come back to you each time. They've, they've been largely vetted, but a lot of this is estimates. A lot of it is allowances. Until we see the final numbers, the pricing from the subs, we do treat it as an estimate. And once we're, we're sure that number is, is right, we want to roll it into a change order and get it signed and approved. So I appreciate if you would, your latitude in working with us. Give you a lot of examples of what we're adding to the project to make it better, if you, if you care. I know you've had an opportunity to read some of the backup and, and digest that a little bit, so maybe you don't have any questions. But we're here to answer any other questions you have. I appreciate your consideration.
David, I do have one question, but it would be for Mr. Phillips. County has a process for purchases where over a specific dollar amount comes to the board and under a specific dollar amount, the chairman has the ability to approve that. Do you see any legal concerns with an approval of this request?
That's a great question. I thought about it. As long as we've got BOC approval, I am good with the proposed mechanism.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, just to add to that, most of this is not new purchases with a new vendor. This is the same vendor we have in our contract. It's adding to the same contract. And I, I think this means we've used it on occasion. And again, I appreciate your latitude in working with us on that. As we, if we do have other things, we break out like the furnishings, equipment, and they're over the $50,000. Each one of those will be brought back to you for approval as we wrap up the purchasing side of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks again, Amy.
Thank you.
New business number- New business number four is discuss action to approve a development agreement between Pine Hill Investments LTD and Abney Austin Investments LP for Paulding County, Georgia, for the Possum Creek Gap Sewer Project. It's in post four. Ms. Ashmore?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Bring this up. The gap sewer on Possum Creek was originally going to be installed as part of a 378-lot residential development. The property was lost in the bank and subsequently donated to Paulding County in 2014. And the property is in the Pumpkin Vine Creek Drainage Basin. It's currently zoned PRD and it is in a conservation easement with the Georgia-Alabama Land Trust. Community Development and has researched it to assure that we have the ability to run the sewer through that, through the, that property. Wanted to kind of give you that before we get into, into the details of this. Some background. Paulding County has developed its sewer system with a number of pump stations and the southern end of the Pumpkin, of the Pumpkin Vine Basin actually pumps to Copper Mine. The green line represents an approximate location of the, the basin line between the Copper Mine Basin and the Pumpkin Vine Basin by gravity. The dashed red line represents where the basin boundary is now. And you see all those purple triangles, blue triangles in the middle? Those are pump stations that are pumping south to Copper Mine Waste Treatment Facility, Water Reclamation Facility versus pumping, versus flowing north to Pumpkin Vine. The Possum Creek Pump Station is one of the further north pump stations and, and it is the one we want to talk to you today. But it is kind of a watershed project for us in that it opens the future to being able to eliminate and reroute more of these pump stations north to Pumpkin Vine so that they are treated in the basin that they are actually located in. The property that this gap sewer would run through is, is located between Dallas-Aquithrough Highway shown on the, on the bottom right and Seven Hills Boulevard, which is up on the upper left of this map. And, and you see it has Possum Creek running right between it. The gap sewer is 8,100 feet of 18-inch pipe is what we anticipate needing to serve the future needs of this basin. It would connect the, the existing Possum Creek Pump Station, which is pumping down into the New Hope community today before flowing to, to Copper Mine and up to existing gravity sewer that's on the north end of this project. Give you an idea of cost. This, this gap, this 8,100 feet, is about a $2.1 million project. We have an opportunity to enter in to a development agreement with Pine Hill Investments and Abney Austin Investments to get this, this gap sewer constructed as part of their development. The development agreement that you have in your package has a few pertinent provisions that I'd like to call out. The construction would be done by, caused to be constructed by the, by the landowners, by these developers upon sale of their property in whole or part for development. The Paulding County contribution of, it would be 1.05 million to construct it with 790,000 of that coming from the Water System Renewal and Extension Fund and the difference with 260,000 coming from the general fund. Payments would be made on a quarterly basis during construction in the same, in proportion to the amount of construction that's complete. The provision that, we've learned a number of things over the years in, in development agreements. One of the provisions of this development agreement is that it does expire in 60 months of, of its adoption should the notice to proceed or commencement of clearing not begin. As some of you know, we have development agreements that date back 15 to 15-plus years that are, that are still open-ended in, in this, particularly in this Pumpkin Vine Basin. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Questions, comments?
Worked on this with you a little bit.
Yeah.
Could you go over a little bit what's going on with the New Hope area and the smell and how this eventually will help control that?
Certainly. We have got four pump stations, possibly five pump stations, that should flow north to Pumpkin Vine that currently pump down to the New, down into the New Hope retail commercial area. And due to the amount of time that it takes for that waste to be moved from its point of generation into New Hope, there are odors generated. And we've had significant odor issues that we've been working on in the, in the New Hope area. We are currently injecting chemicals at the Possum Creek Lift Station and at the Timberlands Lift Station that are the two primary sources of the waste getting into that New Hope community at a cost of about $70,000 a year to control those odors. And so, this alleviates some of that flow that, that is currently going down, going south to, to the New Hope community and will, will help us alleviate the, the odor problems that we're having.
And this is probably one of, I know there's a list of projects you'd like to see done and this is one of the top in projects of the county that are needed.
Well, and, and one of the things that, I'm trying to choose my words carefully so, so I don't offend anyone's sensibilities. But we have, we have a lot of sewer that's being pumped around the county. We have, on average, we, if, if we look at the number of lifts, of pump stations that we have today, and I'm using the word pump station because I think it, you, you need to get the, the gravity of that situation. We've got 44 lift stations. We have a, probably another five that we expect to come onboard in the next couple of years. One of the challenges that Gwinnett County, on the other side of Metro, has faced over the years is a similar development pattern they developed on pump stations. And everyone talks about how many pump stations they have. But I started looking at it and I said, oh, my gosh. If you take the number of pump stations and divide it by our treatment capacity and you look at theirs, we actually have more. So, our, our number of pump stations that we have per million gallons a day of treatment capacity exceeds anything in the state. That's O and M cost. That's, that's risk. It's, it's risk of mechanical failure. And when, when a pump station fails, it means that there's sewage in the creek. And, and that is something that, that we take very seriously. So, yes, any of these projects where we can eliminate a pump station are very important and high priority for us.
Thank you so much, Lori. That's the conclusion of regular business. We have no one who's signed up to speak on non-agenda items. We do have a requirement to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation. This time, I'll entertain a motion that we do that.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn into executive session.